Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
January 25th, call the Rockingham School Board meeting to order. I'll lead us in a pledge of allegiance today. A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda? Mr. Clark, would you like to move Act 173 up toward the top so you can be ready to go for your high school meeting?
As we can do it before 6:30, you can do it anywhere. I was gonna follow your meeting anyway, George.
Okay, well, we'll leave things as is. As I said, I'm gonna try to move through pretty swiftly tonight. So any other adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
I've got one quick one. I'm just gonna add, I don't know how it's listed in the executive session, real quick. It's gonna be just a quick on SU office lease agreement that we'll discuss in executive sessions. Other than that, I have none. Hearing no others. Very good. Moving on, communication and public comment. Anybody from the public have any communications for us? Love to hear from you.
I don't see anyone in the chat.
Okay, well, we on this board, we don't, we decided not to do the chat, so.
Okay, sorry.
You can just not worry about that.
Great.
One more chance. Anybody from the public? I see someone else just chimed in. Communication and public comment. Hearing none. Okay, moving on, reports, business office updates. Flora here? Yes, Flora's here. So Flora, it was just, I think the ask was more of a, just a basic, I mean, we get the reports. I've said before, I can hardly balance a checkbook, so maybe just a quick, you know, one-minute synopsis of what we're, where we're at with the 2021 school year and, you know, it doesn't have to be anything drawn out, I don't think.
So I did send the report to you guys, which you guys get every other week, the budget versus actual. Right now, I did as well send the revenue report because budget versus actual only gives you expenses. So according to projected revenue, you guys are right now about 56%. We as well did a report that we did run so we could try to correct the error that has been carrying along through all of the schools, which is the fact that E-Finance is just combining current year with summer payroll. That was updated. We supposed to see a change on this coming payroll. Once we run payroll, according to E-Finance, that should be fixed. So we are fingers crossed that that will work. If not, then we will have to do everything manually because they just don't have a different answer for us. So we did the first run, first update, hoping that everything salary-wise will get fixed. If not, then we'll have to go and do manual adjustments for those amounts as well. We updated, we had a lot of issues in E-Finance as well that when a person leaves, the salary gets an encumbrances. And for some reason, even though we discharge a person from the system, the encumbrance amount of the salaries stays there as well. That was updated. And hopefully, when we do this payroll run, it will be fixed as well.
Okay, and I think that was great. Thank you. How are we looking as far as projected surplus?
Right now, surplus-wise, I cannot give you like a definite answer. I could just mention what we have in projections as revenue right now that I'm seeing. So from the revenue report that I sent you guys, right now, year today, you guys have a 52.21% already received. So that is $5,685,000. But we still updating the system. We're still doing general entries. So we are hoping that that number still keeps going up.
Okay, so it sounds like it might be a little premature to have some sort of projection there, right?
Well, it is because we just actually closed FY '20 for the auditors. So now we are trying to catch up on everything for FY '21. We were just trying to match everything through our journal entries, account back reconciliations and everything for FY '20 so we can match everything for the auditors. So now we are working on FY '21, trying to update the system, fix coatings, try to work with E-Finance with errors that we found, like encumbrances, try to update the system to see if, you know, what we budgeted for salaries is gonna be matching, that nothing from the past year is being encumbrance in the current year. So it's a lot of hands and outs for E-Finance, but we're just taking it one step at a time.
Okay. Thank you. I got a good feeling about this upcoming year and I think it's gonna be a lot smoother. So thank you for the work you guys are doing. Any questions, comments for Flora? I see Jason Terry. Go ahead.
Flora, thank you for doing it. Do you think by next month, you could have better idea of what the projection will be for the surplus at our next normal, whatever our normal meeting would be, like in February? You think that would be good to ask or good to request that, I mean?
I'm hoping by mid-February. It depends, it depends on a lot of parts. It depends how it's gonna go with E-Finance, what we have updated. But revenue-wise, you know, the system is cut up, but most likely is just to be sure that what we have in encumbrances is actuals and not things that are rolling from previous year. So that's my only concern with E-Finance. But Sean has been working really hard. I've been working with her. So we are trying to do all the updates, but as well, we are working with finalizing the audits, which is the first priority that we have right now. We just finished the SU. We still have the other three pending.
Another quick question. Before, hang on before you go, could everybody who's not speaking mute? I can't see everybody on here, but could you mute your, we're getting a little feedback here, that's all. Chris, I see your hand. If you want to jump in, feel free to do that. Is everybody unmuted?
I left mine unmuted so that you know that, you know, there's no conversations going on.
Okay, all right. Okay, so. Thank you. Chris, go ahead.
It's really tough to project surpluses because we really don't, you know, go into a budget trying to budget for surpluses. So, I mean, usually, we really don't know until the end of the year, once everything's closed out, if we're even gonna have a surplus. So it's really tough to project something such as surpluses. I mean, we, like Flora said, we can give you an idea of what we've already spent compared to last year at this time, but anything we give you right now is just gonna be purely a guess, speculation because each, you know, especially comparing this year to last year, but it's really tough to project any kind of surplus at any year, anytime.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Jason, you had a little bit more to go.
Yeah, just.
I see you, Priscilla. I'll get you next, okay?
Chris, thank you for that. That explains what I was looking for. Flora, just question for you then. Could we start looking at, or maybe you already know, like what are, what are our strengths in the Rockingham District, and what are our weaknesses that you see from your findings by working with the people on a day-to-day basis?
I wouldn't call it weaknesses or strengths. There's a lot of policies that we have put in place, better processes that we had. We have a better control now of expenditures, which, you know, before it wasn't like, there was a policy in place, but it was not being followed. But you could see that now when you guys are assigning the warrants, you know, everything is more organized, it's a little bit more controlled, you know, we have a better handle on what is being approved, you know, as why, what a purchase is for. So, but I wouldn't call it like, it's just new set of eyes, I guess, and new processes and just educating the staff, but everybody's been working pretty good. And I think everybody's doing great and they taking a lot of things into considerations when they doing their expenses. Same thing with working overtime, you know, we have a handle on those things.
So by you watching it, you feel that it's, the controls are a little bit tighter?
It is. You know, we don't have any more open purchase orders, so now we do know what is being purchased. We'd rather have a reimbursement process instead of just giving an X dollar amount to anybody just to shop around. So that is a better control in expenses.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Priscilla, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's just like your home budgets. There's no way you can determine if there's going to be an unexpected expense or there's, you're going to be able to cut back on certain things because you didn't use as much as you planned. And that's something that works out all through the year. So trying to do that ahead of time is really putting our business office and Flora, I think, in a quandary here as to, you know, she can come out with a figure, but whether it holds true or not is all dependent on what expenses and what other things happen to come in later in the year. For example, you might get an unexpected grant that you can apply for and end up with more money, and that would be more revenue. You could, you know, if your mind has something break down, so you have to take something out and spend it on something. Or maybe the classroom needs an extra 10 reams of paper that they didn't expect to use. So it's, it's all, you know, just like your home budget, something that we really kind of have to wait for.
Yeah, great comment. Appreciate that. I think, I'm just assuming, but I think Jason's question was more just a general vibe on how things are looking and, you know, how we think we're gonna finish the year. I don't think it, anything, I'm not looking for anything actual, but yeah, that's a great comment. I certainly appreciate that and I can relate to that for sure. Any other questions, comments for Flora? Or the financial 2021 business office, anything like that? Hearing none. Principals, again, it's just a brief, quick, doesn't have to be anything extravagant. I know we're, there was some short notice and, you know, just, hey, what's going on in your schools? We haven't met like this in a while. It's been all budget. So, you know, I think families maybe wanna, wanna hear just a touch of what's going on. So I see Ms. Hazard put her camera on, so I will let her go first. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Let's see. So we have, we haven't had a regular meeting in a while, so just reflecting back since the last time, but to let you all know that engagement was super high during our remote week after the holidays. Our average attendance was 98.4%, pretty incredible. It speaks volumes to the work of our staff and the support from our families. We have added five new students since our last meeting, three from VTVLC and two new students. We administered the winter MAP benchmark the week of January 11th, and all makeups were completed last week. And this week, we're gonna hold grade level data team meetings to analyze and discuss the data, ultimately using it to drive our instruction. We have lots of family engagement plans in the works, given Title I grant funds. The first one we rolled out today in honor of National Reading Day, which was January 23rd. We purchased a We Both Read book for each student to read at home, and the books are cleverly designed. So a parent reads one part, one page, and then the student reads the next page. And so they take turns reading aloud, can snuggle up on the couch. Obviously, the parents' pages feature higher-level text and the child's pages are directed specifically at the child's reading level. In February, we're gonna have math, we're gonna do a math and ELA focus and introduce and play games. We purchased some math and ELA games to send home and hold an evening Zoom with each classroom. So that'll be exciting. And then March 9th, we're gonna actually bring in the same storyteller that Carrie brought in. We heard fantastic reviews and are super excited to have and welcome Len Cabrel to Saxons River. And we're gonna do an in-person recorded story and then do a live storytelling session in the evening so that families can, can join in. Chris had asked that all principals share out a brief survey about remote learning, and we did that today. I've only received two responses. It's been out for about a week and a half. And both of those responses indicated that folks do not plan to travel over February break. And then just a building update, Rick Schuman has facilitated the work, which was partially grant-funded, to have a web-based control for our boiler systems installed, which will give us a path to greater overall control of our HVAC systems in the future. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Priscilla, you're up.
I have a comment. I really thoroughly enjoyed the pictures that were on your newsletter, Flora. They were absolutely amazing to see the kids out in the snow and sliding down the slide and making snowmen and doing all of those things. Great thing that you're doing.
Thanks. Photos really do speak volumes, don't they? So even though we can't have people come in, we can share what's happening in our building through pictures. Thank you.
Anything else? For Flora. Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Appreciate it. And Flora, and I think I forgot to thank you for your report too. Thank you so much. Moving on, next principal. Who would like to go next? Can be, again, again, this is a quick, just letting parents know what's going on, just talking about what's happening in your schools.
I can jump in if you want.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, for Central, we've had some very busy days of few short weeks, but busy days. We too have welcomed students. We have five additional students, two brand-new students to the school, and three from VTVLC. We also had just completed our MAP assessments last week for reading and math. We are working on makeups for any students that were not in attendance and then just correlating all the data and then coming up with next-step plans for that. We were the lucky recipient of a grant from the Vermont Principals Association and Community Foundation. So we will be holding a raffle soon, and we have some gift cards to Leesize Market that we'll be raffling off to families who couldn't use more help with groceries right now. Students will be making and sharing Valentines to be shared with seniors via Meals on Wheels. So we're working with Senior Solutions on this, and they'll be distributing our Valentines that the students make to the seniors. We also have some more guided reading material. We have some grant support for that. So they've come in, they're just being sorted, and then eventually will be disseminated to the classrooms to be able to use. We also working on our guided reading groups in classrooms, supporting the readers at their instructional levels, working really with hard with the small groups to make sure that they're gaining better understanding and comprehension of the stories. We're working on our math PD for the teachers and understanding how to best support conceptual math and working with small groups within guided math groups for school. And the teachers will be working on that from February till June. And recently, in physical education, Mr. Laurie, our PE teacher, has been taking the students out cross-country skiing out back. So that's been great to see. Hopefully, you've seen some pictures on Facebook and other places. And we'll be getting our newsletter out as well. So similar to what Laura's been sending out, we'll be sending our smaller newsletter out to families and to the board. You'll be able to see that soon. And just to save the date, we have a parent cafe coming up on February 3rd. We are focusing on occupational therapy. It doesn't have to be students who are in occupational therapy, but what you can do for activities to support at home. So Karen Cota, one of our occupational therapy assistants, will be working also with Dana Pierce and really making sure that families understand some games going into one of the next breaks coming up in February of things that you can do to help support your students at home, using everyday materials that you have. So February 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., it'll be a Zoom meeting. So we hope families can join us then. And similar to what Laura said, we did the travel survey, and we had 81 responses, 91% said that they are not planning on doing anything and going anywhere. 8% had responded, so they were doing something. But we just wanted to get this information ready to go for the nurses and to make the best decisions. And then, again, we'll be having some more parent cafes each month via Zoom, so we're looking for some ideas. We've had some feedback, similarly, coming up for speech, how to help with speech, homework helpers, online dangers for kids, and then how to help with sleep. So families have a better idea of how their students can get better sleep at night. So those are some upcoming events, and we'll be keeping you updated. That's about it. Any questions?
I think I could use a lesson in extra sleep too. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Kennedy? Priscilla, yep.
Yeah, Carrie, do you find the thing for that?
You're cutting out.
Zoom thing on there, so that I can check in.
Hang on, hang on. Hang on a quick second. Priscilla, can you say that again? You cut out for a quick second and just want to make sure.
My bandwidth doesn't always work good. Is that Zoom link for that, for your, your parent cafes, is that on the website? Or can you share that with board members if, or is it specifically, do you watch parents?
Right now, it's C, yes, but it certainly, you know, can be open to other people. So we'll be able to share that. Once we get the link all set, we'll have it on their Facebook page and the school website. So we'll be able to share that out to you.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Any other questions, comments for Ms. Kennedy? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bukowski, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So I, I want to begin my report by making sure it's part of the Board Minutes, how much I appreciate everything that Dana Quadro did to ensure the smooth running of BFMS while I was on leave. Having said that, I'll jump in here. Our intermural program has started with basketball. We have 26 students signed up, seventh and eighth graders. Timino and Sierra Patterson are the advisors. They're leading drills, and they're playing minimal competitive lead-up games with regards to basketball. And these are games that are designed to help our students develop and hone their skills and following the guidelines that were set forth by the AOE on January 15th. Our athletic director, Jessica Illingworth, coordinated the sign-ups. She's managing the health screenings and protocols at that during the intermural program, which includes contact lists. So we know who all the students are that are there on a given day in case that ever becomes necessary. On our enrollment, we got, we have three new students, two that transferred from VTVLC and one new enrollee. We also, right now, our students are taking their MAP testing, their winter benchmark for MAP testing this week, and I'll give a full report at a future school board meeting. On January 19th, 27 staff members received COVID tests per the free testing that's offered to us at school through the Vermont Department of Public Health, excuse me. We also handed out the remote learning survey, and we had 144 responses for the week of February, and 87.5% of the people said that they are not traveling, are not planning on traveling outside of Vermont during the week of February break. That pretty much is all that I have right now. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bukowski. Any questions, comments for Priscilla? Go ahead.
We are also making sure too that parents know that the border still is, in fact, that there's no people visiting from one household to another, and that travel is restricted so that those parents will realize that when they come back, their children cannot come back into the schools right away. They'll have to quarantine if they are traveling.
I think that's not necessarily just for Ms. Bukowski, but more of a general.
It's for everybody.
Right? Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Anything for Ms. Bukowski, Priscilla directly, or anybody else?
No, it's just a follow-up after all of them. Sorry.
Excellent. Thank you.
I do have one general comment, though, if I can.
Sure.
The other thing is, I, I know all of the teachers and all of the schools are dealing with the fact that they're worried about COVID and the spread. All of us are. And our state, I know, is not giving shots to teachers as a first responder type thing. That's based on the data that they've done. From one standpoint, I can see how the governor's making that decision. From the other standpoint, I realize that all of you are exposed to children coming into the schools, and you're worried about the asymptomatic ones. So just know that the board is aware of that and that we are, we reach out to you and understand, you know, how difficult it can be. I have personally, one of my children's families, their entire family apparently has had it because they test for the antibodies in there. And my daughter is suddenly sick right now with it. Thank goodness, it's mild. But I've been doing that for the last two weeks, and apparently the other three members of our family had it before that, but did not know. So we are also dealing with a whole lot of people that are asymptomatic. They also are totally not really recovered necessarily at the 10 days or the 14 days. They may still be carrying it. I know she is still testing positive after two weeks, although she does not have any of the symptoms. So just, we can get it that way as well. So you're doing a fantastic job, all of you, in taking care of and keeping it out, where you're instructing your students and all of that. And I just wanted to recognize that, knowing just how traumatic it is for everybody.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks. Thanks for that comment. Last call for questions, comments for principals. Seeing none, hearing none. Jason Benson, and I see your cameras off, and I can't see you all the time. So if you've got something to say, just jump right in and I'll recognize you, okay? Okay, thank you, principals. Appreciate it very much. David Clark, you're up. Act 173. He's gonna touch briefly on 173, and my understanding is that maybe he may be asking for some sort of action from the board, but I'm not quite sure. So I'm just gonna let him take it away. It's all yours.
Well, thank you, George. To begin with, I think we're gonna get much deeper in the weeds with Act 173 Wednesday night at the SU meeting. I just want to go over conceptually what, what's at stake here. I think all board members and most members of the public are aware that in the classroom, we have kids who we refer to as regular ed. We have kids who are special ed. Special ed is a, requires generally a higher order of support for them to progress in their education. Special ed has always received reimbursement in varying degrees, both the federal level and the state level. However, the state of Vermont seeing money continually going out for schools, and there's a very simple formula here, which we walk around with a target on our back because of, and that's enrollments down, cost up. We are spending too much money in school. That does not take into account the relative needs of the kids we're educating. Okay, so the legislature in 2017 passed Act 173. And what Act 173 did was it changed the formula for special ed reimbursement from reimbursement to an out-and-out block grant. And here's what the problem is. The block grant is not based on a special. And here's what the problem is. The block grant is not based on a special ed population or a special ed count in your district. It's based on the total number of kids you've got, regular ed and special ed. And the way this is gonna sugar off is that if you're in Wyndham Northeast, your taxpayers probably are gonna end up having to make up more than $1 million a year in lost special ed revenue. I'm hoping that we can get you some accurate figures for Wednesday night. However, if you're sitting in a town like Stowe, where you might have a 5% spend rate, you've just been handed what, in effect, is a tax reduction. And you can take that money, you can roll it in over into other programming, like your 504s, some towns where they have ESL kids, well, I can spend on ESL as well. So we got, we got a huge, huge problem looming over us here. Laura Sibilia, who's a rep for the Wilmington Dover area, has introduced a piece of legislation, which is now known as H54. And what H54 is intended to do is to mitigate these, the worst effects of Act 173. And I have to back up here a little bit because I missed an important point. And that is that it was realized fairly early on that if you're Wyndham Northeast, and I'm working right now very closely with people in Burlington School District, they're, they're gonna get clobbered, we're gonna get clobbered, and the reason for this is that reimbursements are also based on what's referred to as a weighting formula, and these weighting formulas are grossly inequitable. Another thing, we'll get deeper in on Wednesday night, but the long and the short of it is that if, if we, in fact, move toward a more equitable weighting formula to determine how special ed reimbursements or block grants, or however it's done, get a portion, some towns are gonna be looking at a significant tax hit, particularly the Stoas of the world. And under H54 Laura Sibilia's bill, there would be a three-year phase in on picking up your complete obligation if you're one of the low-special education districts. Okay, so as I said before, I've been working, Jack Brier has been working with some Burlington members. We have Rutland City involved. We have the Conic and Green involved. We have Windsor involved. We have Wyndham Southeast, which is Bradleboro, Guilford, Putney and Dummerston involved, and we're working very hard to try to do something about this. At some point, I think we're gonna have to spend money, because bluntly, without really putting on a full-court press in the legislature, it's likely that the revisions of, that may occur to Act 173 will have minimal impact on our district in terms of mitigating the likely hit to our taxpayers. I think that's sort of the broad, general overview, which is that in changing the formula, Wyndham Northeast and many, many other school districts in the state are gonna be penalized very heavily for the size of their special education populations, and that the funding, which is available for special education, will end up being redistributed for non-special ed purposes, and that's why this is important. So please, come Wednesday night, and we'll get, as I said before, deep in the weeds.
Because you can make an appointment and not show up, or make an appointment and be somebody else.
Yeah, Ms. Green, it looks like you've joined. There we go. Thank you for muting. Appreciate it.
So please, come Wednesday night, help us work to solve the problem. We've all got a considerable risk here that we need to mitigate. George, thank you for your time, and your board. Thank you, board, for your time.
Thank you, David. Appreciate, appreciate the explanation. Very quickly, any questions, comments? I don't want to dig down too deep, but for David on this, Priscilla, I see your hand. Go ahead.
David, and how, you said it would be just redistributed from special ed to regular ed, which technically I would think would be illegal, but how are they proposing that we get a, you know, get that stopped and get that to not happen, so that it does go for this special ed population?
The, the current vehicle for doing that, Priscilla, is H54, which is known in Montpelier as the Laura Sibilia bill. But we also have Carolyn Partridge as, as one of the signers of that bill, so locally, it has some attention. Unless H54 or some form of H54 is passed, we're gonna be looking at 173 as it was enacted, and that will be, as I keep saying, just absolute chaos for taxpayers and school boards trying to live within a reasonable budget.
Thank you. Hang on. Megan, I see you got a hand up. Go ahead.
Sorry, I got really nervous, apparently. David, can you just give me an idea of what you mean by full-court press on the legislature? And you don't have to go into details. Just get my mind going in the right direction for Wednesday night. What did you mean by that?
Laura Sibilia has introduced a bill which changes the weighting formula that Act 173 has suggested. Sunday night, I sent out a copy of the study that was done on behalf of AOE as to what a more equitable weighting formula would look like. And to make it as simple as possible, poverty kids would have the highest weighting under that, and then it would taper. And of course, if you're in Stowe, you have very little poverty, so it's, they don't have a problem. We have a problem. So what I'm trying to say is that just because it's a bill introduced doesn't mean that there's gonna be a bill passed or a bill that's passed intact. And in that regard, our, at this point, ad hoc coalition is on the verge of hiring a lobbyist to keep an eye both on the bill and make us aware of when it may be useful for boards to start talking to specific legislators who are on either the ed committees or who are otherwise influential in how H54 ends up either being passed or not being passed. We want it passed, because, as I keep saying, it's just a huge, huge hit for this district.
Perfect. Thank you so much, David.
Any other quick questions, comments for David on Act 173? Jason Terry, go ahead.
David, did you say that you want H54 passed?
There are two, two, there are two schools of thought. If you're on the receiving end of the likely tax increases that could occur under 173 if it's not passed. One is that you really want the legislation passed now and the weighting formula, which AOE has in hand, to be enacted now. The reality is that in many towns, that will result in a big hit on their tax rates all at once. And the Sibilia bill, H54, would phase the weighting formula in, and thereby those tax hits on the schools that do not serve large, either poverty or special ed populations. I'm not saying this very well. What I'm trying to say is that the, the two schools of thought are do it now and let the others feel the pain. The other school of thought is phase it in over three years, so maybe we get more buy-in. Because there is, you know, a real question at this point as to whether the legislature will seriously take it up. Certainly, if there are districts that are looking to get clobbered on the other end of this, they're all for postponing it. If you're on our end of it, where we see a very large increase in our taxes, we want to do something about it now. Personally, I favor the three-year phase in, because I think we can maybe make that happen this year, and I'm not sure if we don't do that, that it will happen this year. This is Wednesday night discussion. It's not really Monday night discussion. I've taken way too much of your time, so I would like to hand your meeting back to George, unless there's anybody that has a burning question that can't wait till Wednesday.
I've got just one, David, and it's quick, and you had mentioned it, I think it was the previous SU meeting. We've had so many meetings, they get blurry, but you were hoping to have other districts show some form of support by taking in some sort of action at their meetings or during their discussion. Is there anything that you are asking this board to do in support of those efforts?
Well, George, the SU has passed the resolution to support adoption of the weighting formula. That's the H54. Okay, the other thing, you know, I'm gonna tell you straight up, is that we're gonna probably have to spend some money. And this goes back a long, long time here. Maybe, maybe Priscilla will remember Sally Warren, who was a high school board member who famously said, you don't build B1 bombers with good intentions. You build B1 bombers with money. And I'm gonna tell you that I think we're gonna have to spend a little bit on lobbying to save quite a lot, because we, we really, really gonna need the help in Montpelier to make sure that, that we are proactive with the legislature on this. When I say "we," I'm talking about our district, but I'm talking about every other school district in Vermont that's gonna get clobbered by an unchanged Act 173.
Okay, so, so hearing no request for action right now. Thank you for that report very much. That was, that was great. And I don't see any other hands or, or indication for questions, so yeah, thanks, David. Great, great report, and we'll be, we'll be tuning in Wednesday to, to get down and dirty with it, so thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where are we here? We got a couple executive sessions, so I think we're down to directors' comments, and it looks like we beat the hour mark, so. Who'd like to go first? Any directors' comments?
I have.
Megan, go ahead.
I don't have any tonight. Trying to get everybody out the door on time. Thank you for everything.
Mr. Benson, I think I heard your voice.
You did. I said I have nothing for tonight, taking it all in on this Act 173.
Excellent. Thank you. Priscilla, your upper left on my screen. Go ahead.
I'm gonna do a real quick one. Encouraging anyone that you know to get signed up. Anyone 75 and older can sign up in Vermont. It's a really quick process. And my husband did it this morning, and, and if you're in another state, New Hampshire, which is right next to us, at 65 and up, they've been open since the 22nd to sign up, and they do include teachers, so maybe any of our teachers that live there could also do that if they've seen, so. Help, because I know our whole family could do it because of my son and his stuff if I was in New Hampshire, but I have to wait a long time for Vermont, but it's worth waiting if we have the policy that the governor has. Let's just do our best and get signed up.
Thank you, Priscilla. Mr. Terry?
I was just wondering, Mr. Pratt, the Boston Bruins jersey, who is that? What number?
Number four. I already looked it up.
What's his name?
Mr. Orr himself.
Nice. I did not know that. I'm a Ranger fan, but like I'm.
I won't hold that against you.
Yes, you will. Thank you.
All set, Jason? Okay. Not a lot here either. Thank you, guys. Thanks, principals, doing a great job, and, you know, we've been able to keep this thing out of our schools, and it's, you guys are doing excellent, and last comment, we don't bet against Tom Brady. Agenda items for next board meeting? When are we gonna have another board meeting? Our next scheduled board meeting would be next week, but I don't think that's.
The 15th.
We have so many meetings, I don't think we want to do that. So can we just go to the third? Anybody object to going to the third Monday of the month?
That would be the 15th, yeah.
That's our, that's a regular schedule for us, right? So can we just do that? Is that everybody, I mean, if somebody really doesn't want to, I'll, I'll, I'll show up, but.
Quick point, that, that is the Monday of February break. I don't know if that matters or not, but I just want to put that out there.
I think you guys already gave your report, so if the board's all set, you guys wouldn't have to attend, and we could still get a board meeting in.
Yeah, I think what I had a kind of an epiphany today, that I don't know that we really need a full principals' report every time. And we can talk about that offline. I've got some ideas. I'd like to try to re, re, relook at how we, we do our meetings, and Chris, maybe you can, you and I can talk about that, but I think we can restructure it a little bit to take a little bit of pressure off, but still get work done. So maybe we can talk about that. Is everybody okay with meeting on, everybody else, everyone okay with meeting on, I don't have the date right in front of me?
15th.
On 15th, February 15th? I don't see any objections.
Definitely don't want to do the first. That's your daughter's birthday, right?
Thanks for remembering. Yeah, I'll get in trouble for that one, so. Okay, great. So our next meeting will be February 15th, 5:30. Same bad time, same bad channel, and any agenda items, get them to me by end of business that Wednesday prior, so that Nicole and I can get, and Chris can get an agenda butchered up and whatnot, so. I think that's it.
Our, our informational meeting is March 2nd, right? So we have that all scheduled, too. We're all set for that.
Super exciting, isn't it? Okay, so I think at this point, I'll take a motion to go into executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation and SU building lease. I'll entertain a motion at any time from anyone. Show me a hand. Thank you, Priscilla. All in favor? Priscilla, go ahead?
Yes.
Yes, Megan?
Yes.
Jason Terry? Jason Benson?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Good night, everyone.